Good evening. I'll call to order the Blackstone Millville Regional District School Committee, school committee meeting today, March 10th, 2022. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we can do introduction of members. I'm Tara Larkin. I'm a Millville representative.
Amanda Gilmain, Millville.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Tim Howell, Blackstone.
Kylie Sacco, Blackstone.
Madison, Blackstone.
Matt Earnworth, Assistant Superintendent.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
And next is Student Representative Updates.
That's it? Okay. So, we have our drama club. They're performing on May 10th, and that is the musical of Princess and the Pea. We have our mock car crash, which is the week of prom. We learn about, like, the dangers of drunk driving. We have spring sports that start on the 21st, which is tennis, softball, baseball, track and field. We have internships, seniors, fourth quarter, and we have seven senior internships that are at the elementary schools.
The RE sports team won today, so that's exciting. It's their first win.
Woo-hoo!
And, yes.
Yeah, some sore thumbs.
And then our Friday advisories. We have two coming up where we do, like, team and community building, the 17th and the 25th. The GSA, their connections conference, is next Friday, the 18th, when we have the Professional Development Day. And at the high school, and I believe all schools right now, there's a sock drive and food can drive going on. Sophomores have their English MCAS coming up on the 22nd and 23rd. Yes. And then we have the NHS doing our annual Empty Soup Bowl on April 13th. Our bowls are looking pretty good, so it's exciting. You should all buy a ticket. It's very exciting.
That's it?
And that's it.
Excellent. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
And I did forget our remote members. Go ahead, you guys are off.
Oh, thank you.
You're smart to run, girls. Like, we've learned this lesson.
Have a lovely evening.
It's Erin and Carrie, or does Erin?
I don't know if Carrie's on yet. I know Erin's on.
Okay. Erin, are you there? Here she comes.
Well, there's Carrie.
There's Carrie, yeah.
I'm here. I am here.
Okay, just introduce, I guess, say your name and town.
Erin Bonacco, Millville.
Carrie Goddett, Blackstone.
All right, thanks, ladies. And we have the public hearing for our 2023 budget. I'm giving it to Jason.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you all. And to those of you at home that are tuning in, we are, this portion of our agenda is to have our formal public hearing on our FY23 budget. And let me just quickly mention, as we start to work our way through this, that if you were able to tune in and participate in the joint meeting we had last week with the Boards of Selectmen, the Finance Subcommittee, the Capital Subcommittee, of course, our School Committee, and the Administration from the towns and the schools, you have seen this. And so I want to make sure to say that upfront, because the information that we're going to discuss this evening is 99.9% the same. So if you've had a chance to tune into this, you have seen this information already. The only kind of nuance that we're going to talk, that Matt and I will talk about tonight, is just the OPEB piece when we get into the town assessment aspect of that. So if the committee is okay, I'm going to walk through this just a little bit quicker, only because it truly is the same information. And again, if the public has tuned in to the joint meeting, they've seen this already. So I don't want to belabor it. But of course, the budget for FY23 is anchored in our district improvement strategy. This is our last year with our current strategy. And I do want to publicly thank the School Committee and our Steering Committee. I'm not on the Steering Committee. The Steering Committee is made up of our staff across the school system that have been hard at work on developing our next version of our strategy. But the School Committee has also been very focused on this work, and I really appreciate the workshops that the committee has so actively engaged in to help really give us the feedback we need to ensure we're on the right track. So a big thank you to our Steering Committee and to our School Committee for the work on that. Again, it's always important to talk about the who of our work, and these are the 1,500-plus blessings that we have across our system that we are very lucky to care for, not just the academic needs, but the whole child needs each and every day. This is an overview of our student enrollment and our demographic breakdown. And again, we've walked through this, so I won't spend much time on it, but just to give the community another sense of the budget that, the student enrollment, rather, excuse me, that the budget is built around. This is really important to mention, our state-determined measures, because it really talks about, from our perspective, the return on investment. You know, we are really clear that our fiscal plan has to match our student plan, our instructional plan. We call it a few different things. And in this situation, we just want to highlight a few data points that are important to note. Currently, our state did not issue any new accountability ratings or accountability levels because of COVID last year, but prior to that, none of our schools were at any level of accountability, which is good. That means that we're making all the progress we need to, that we're moving in the right direction. It is not mentioned here, but it is also important to note that the last time that we were issued an accountability status, our goal rating was making significant progress toward goals. So we're really happy about that. And of course, we'll see where this spring brings us. And we'll talk in a bit later in the agenda where we think we may end up, or where we may land, based on what our interim assessments are showing us, and those are part of my goals and my evaluation. So we'll delve a bit deeper into that as we move forward through tonight's agenda.
So with respect to the process, as many people are becoming familiar with, we start off with our FY23 timeline that gets approved by the School Committee. Then we ask each principal to identify the needs that they have for their school, and also, we ask them to focus specifically on what they needed to do to make sure that we maintain the remediation of both academic and social skills that we know we're still seeing gaps in from the COVID pandemic, which, nobody has masks on now, so this is, hopefully we're coming out of it, but we do know, regardless of whether we're wearing masks or not, the impact for our kids is going to be pretty long-lasting, and we're going to continue to try to remediate those effects. So afterward, the building principals and the cost center managers go and they meet with their staff, and they work together to figure out what the needs are for either the school or the department. Then we, again, focusing on both their school improvement plans, their instructional focus of their school, and anchoring all of that work, as Jason mentioned, to our District Blueprint 2.0, which I know Jason will speak to a bit further later in his evaluation. Jason and I then meet with each one of the cost center managers, and we go over line by line what it is that they are requesting, and they justify the needs to us, and we give them the approval as to whether or not they're going to present them to the School Committee. Then we, Jason and I, once it was all compiled, actually took probably close to 15 hours or so going through the budget line by line. We had a five-year spending trend that we reviewed for every single one of the lines, and then we also compare that to what was budgeted in the past. After we do that, Jason and I had, you know, removed a few things and discussed some things with the principals or cost center managers. We conduct our budget workshops publicly. That gives the School Committee and the public an opportunity to hear what is prioritized according to the instructional leaders. And then, once again, after the priorities are identified, we then went back with the School Committee and went line by line again, and saw where it was that we could potentially make adjustments in order to get the budget to a place where it would be palatable to the towns.
So part of the work is not just relying on our state and local funding from our towns, but also to make sure that we are diligently going after every grant we can that aligns with our goals. And so, as we talked about last week, to date, we've been successful in writing over $2 million worth of grants. And we're going to talk a little bit later this evening about the math program, but we were notified yesterday that we will be receiving up to the $80,000 for our math program. That was another grant that we had written. So we are really happy that we will be able to offset the cost of our new math series, our K to 12, with an $80,000 grant from the state, which we're really happy about. And so that is not on here yet. We were just notified of that, but some good news. And some other places, we are writing, we will be writing a summer programming grant, which we have summer dollars available through our ESAR money, but every dollar we can get to help supplant that, and I will use "supplant" because it's the right word, we can then use that ESAR money somewhere else. So that's, we are still working hard to, still working hard to find additional funds.
So, in the FY23 budget, what you will see is there is a focus on closing the gaps and advancing the district. Again, we are making sure that we're able to implement our new blueprint for district improvement. We call it our Blueprint 2.0. We're trying to minimize the non-academic barriers that the students are coming in to us with, especially given all of the circumstances that we just referenced earlier. We are going to make sure that we're implementing and supporting the K to 12 mathematics curriculum while we're still reviewing a social studies frameworks and deciding what we need to do with that K through 12 curriculum. And another big piece, a lot of this funding will come from grants, but we want to make sure that we sustain this within our local budget also, is our career development programs and pathways. That is a tremendous piece of the work that we are doing to make sure that we are offering all of the students what they need to be college or career-ready. We also, as part of that, speaking of the college readiness I don't want to miss, building our dual enrollment pipeline, which will be a tremendous, I believe, asset to the district so that our juniors and seniors can start accumulating credits for college, and they'll have some before they even leave us.
And in just a bit, we'll hear from Ms. Fallis, who's here to give an update this evening about the dual enrollment program. So we're really excited on the middle school end, the middle high school end of that pipeline. And then just briefly on resources and staffing, and again, I won't read all these, but you can see where we have looked to continue to prioritize the work that's needed. I think the two probably most important pieces regarding staffing is looking at the .6 history teacher at the middle school to make sure that we can bring back those equitable class sizes, we can round out the teaming model and structure that we have here, and then the additional building substitutes that would be shared between the four schools. From a facilities perspective, of course, what is also in the budget is addressing the asbestos issues that we have at the high school. So those numbers are included in our assessment, which Matt is going to review briefly.
In large scale.
Yeah, you've got it a little bit bigger on your Slide 9 there. It's a little bit easier.
I will apologize in advance for the size of the numbers, both the print size and some of the actual size sizes of the numbers. So what you can see at the top of the left hand of the chart is the expenses that we will be incurring. What you'll see is our school choice sending tuition and our charter school sending tuition right at the top. As we've said before, one of the reasons why we are working so diligently to keep our students here and/or bring our students back is this is a tremendous expense to the district. As you can see, we're paying over $1.5 million in students that are exiting the district. The all-other number that you will see there is the, is the total of the budget that was developed at the district level.
No, I'm fine. I have it in front of me.
Sorry? Can everyone see? Okay?
Yeah, we're good. Thanks.
So the all-other number that you see there is that budget number that the district developed, both for our in-district costs and some of our out-of-district special education costs. But those two top numbers that you see, the school choice and the charter school, that's determined, those numbers are given to us by the state, and that money is just taken right out of our Chapter 70 fund. Below that, what you can see is all of the various areas where we are trying to supplement the general fund. So we have been very clear every budget season that we are going to maximize the use of every fund that we have. And you can see that in this budget, we're proposing applying additional circuit breaker funds for $175,000, additional ESAR II funds and ESAR III funds. The reason why that says the 23 plus 22 rollover is, as Dr. DeFalco mentioned, there are things that we were able to identify this year, shift back to the general fund, and that allows us to roll those ESAR funds over and spend them to try to offset the cost of the FY23 budget. I won't go through all of them, but below, you can see all of our various state revenues and our entitlement grants. The other section where you see estimated offsets from user fees and tuitions, those are other revenues that the district brings in, including our athletics fees, our music fees, and we also have some rental income that we make from renting our classrooms to other programs. And that will bring us to the balance, which is remaining, and that money gets split up across the different areas and is charged to the towns. So what you can see to the lower right-hand side is the breakdown of the assessments, which I know is the bottom line that everyone wants to get to. For Blackstone this year, you can see the minimum local contribution is $7,525,714. The exclusionary, $1,361,261. I won't list them all, but you can see how it's broken down for each town. The total for Blackstone coming out to $10,695,154, and the total for Millville coming out to $3,464,302. I do want to point out a little section in the middle of the right-hand side, which is the minimum local contribution. You'll see there the minimum local contribution listed for this year, and you'll also see the minimum local contribution that is listed for FY22. As you can see, the increase to Blackstone was $480,865, I'm sorry, $480,865, which is an increase of 6.83%, which is tremendous. It's the largest, both of these increases, I won't go through the numbers, for Millville, the $153,509. That's, again, they're both over 6% increase. The increase that we saw from FY21 to FY22 was in the 1% range. So this is where you're going to see a large portion of whatever the increase is to the budget is directly from MLC, which the state determines, and the district really has no control over. If you look the bottom line on the left-hand side, the grand total percent increase for Blackstone over the FY22 budget is 4.58%, and for Millville, it's 3.89%. That is significantly higher than just the operating increase, because both towns have capital payments that will have principal payments due this coming year, so that's why there's a bit of an additional lump in that section. But with respect to the operating costs of the district, minus the capital, the entire increase to Blackstone comes out to a 3.03% and a 1.01% for Millville. You can see something highlighted underneath, which is what Jason mentioned a little earlier. These capital numbers that are included in these assessments do include the asbestos work that we already gave a cost for. It's about $225,000 to $250,000 worth of work that we identified for the towns already. Those costs are built into the actual capital costs in this assessment. What you do not see are the costs that we've been discussing as, with the capital improvement plan boards of each town. Those costs, we are going to be looking at as a smaller group and identifying how the towns want to try to address them. I started receiving emails back from the town administrators today. Thank you both, for people that are volunteering from the town boards to participate in that process. And the other piece is the OPEB, which we can discuss briefly. That was certainly a big talking point for the joint town meeting, if anyone was watching that. For the FY22 year, we did budget to allocate $50,000 into that OPEB account. We did say last year that we would put $50,000 into OPEB when our E and D became certified for this year. I am happy to say our E and D was certified this morning, so I have that number to share. Our E and D was certified at $550,106. And I can also say it is lower than it really should be. We are in the process of going through one of the accelerated repair projects with MSBA, and we're still waiting for reimbursement for them. That was delayed. So on our excess and deficiency calculation, the Department of Revenue reduced our E and D by approximately $310,000 because of reimbursements that we're waiting for from MSBA. So that, in actuality, would point to our E and D being in an area of about $860,000. So with that, I have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with Rockland Trust, and we are going to be setting up the OPEB trust account and putting in the $50,000 that we discussed last year and this year. And similarly, at the joint meeting, there was a discussion and a request for the district to recommend an amount to the towns, and we, in that discussion, decided that we are going to recommend to the towns that they contribute $100,000 this coming year for OPEB, and we are going to ask that they contribute $100,000 for the years to come until we, at some point, determine whether or not we're going to raise that contribution. And those conversations will happen as a group, which has been really productive recently. And the hope is, we will eventually build up that trust fund, and one day, probably not in recent years, or soon-to-come years, we will be able to pay for our retirees' benefits off of the interest that is accumulated in that trust fund. And our next steps?
Where are they?
We really, well, we only have one, I was going to say, the one last step is kind of cut off on this slide. I don't know if it shows the same way on television, but we've gone through our OPEB conversations, we've gone through the joint meeting about the capital improvement plans. We're going to continue to work on both of those items, and we're here for our public hearing, and we will be, hopefully, certifying the budget on Thursday, March 24th.
Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak for the, please? Tell us who you are and where you're from, and then...
My name's Melissa. I'm from Blackstone.
Should I sit here? Or should I sit?
Did you have comments on the budget?
Oh, no.
This is a buzzer. We'll have a public forum in our regular meeting.
Oh, okay.
So we kind of have two meetings going on at once. But, my apologies, yeah. So this is for discussion, you opened the public hearing.
Yes.
So for discussion on the budget, moving forward to the towns, because in our next meeting, we will certify the budget, we will approve a warrant item for stipends for school committee members, and a warrant item for OPEB contributions from each community. So, if anybody has any questions or comments about either of those three things, any of those three things, it's not an "either," that's a "any of." Okay. I don't, are we live-streamed?
We are.
Jesse, are there any comments online?
I don't think we're taking comments online.
And Erin and? Carrie. Carrie are both on?
Mm-hmm.
No.
No, okay. So I'll entertain a motion to officially close the public hearing.
I so move.
Moved by Tim? Is that who said that? Tammy, was that you?
Second.
Seconded by Tammy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And did you also open our meeting at the same time?
So I actually only opened our meeting, not public hearing.
Oh, that's all right.
But I went right into the...
Yeah, okay. No, we're good. Oops, my apologies. We're good.
I don't want to wait until the end.
So we'll open and close our public hearing. All right, so did you do Consent Agenda A? No?
Yes.
All right.
We're done with this.
And we have, we have warrants. They were emailed to us, and we have minutes from February 10th. I'll entertain a motion to approve Consent Agenda A.
Move.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Move by Amanda, seconded by Tim. Any discussion? All those in favor of Consent Agenda A, say aye.
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 Thank you, Erin. Carrie?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Any abstentions? Any nays? Okay, we're good. Okay, so now we'll open our public forum part of our meeting. So now that you sat down, you can come back up again.
Do we have things to sign?
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
My name's Melissa. I'm from Blackstone.
Okay.
So I have a child at the high school, a child here at the middle school, and a child at Millville Elementary. I have a couple of concerns. My daughter, who is in high school, has had a very rough year due to the lack of teachers staying, and what really gets me is the teachers telling these children why they're leaving, and their reason is because the school department is not paying them enough money to be here. My daughter is, since the first quarter, going on her sixth teacher that has left this year as a freshman. So for me, that's very concerning. Hopefully, you guys can take that into consideration for any kid, you know, especially with transition issues, things like that, the structure not being the same. You have one leave, you have one, you know, come, go, whatever. You have to get used to that all over again, and it's kind of frustrating, you know, having one or two. I get it, we're going through a pandemic, but six, that's a lot. That's a lot. And I really don't think adults should be discussing or telling any child why they are leaving. That is between them and administration, and my child should never have to hear that it is because, you know, your school department won't pay me enough. That's not something that I want. And it's not just one. It's numerous since the beginning of the school year that, you know, my daughter has made me aware of, and she tells me about everything. I mean, she's even emailed you. I didn't even know she was emailing you about the asbestos situation. She was like, oh, worried about it, because my uncle's a plumber, so she knows about that stuff. She's very, you know, advocate for herself, but it's really taken a mental health toll with so many different teachers having, you know, come and then get used to it, and then, okay, now you have another teacher come, and, okay, now you're losing this teacher, and now you're losing this teacher. And she's had three classes where, for the quarter, she's had to get, I think they put a P just for pass, so any work that they've put in, it doesn't even go as a number, as a grade. It's a P. That's frustrating when she's sitting here and she's trying her hardest to get honors or high honors. That child cannot get honors or high honors when they have a P on their report card for that quarter. that quarter. So I think it's very unfair for them. And, you know, if you guys can take into consideration, when you have your meetings with your teachers, to, you know, at least speak with them. Tell them, it's not appropriate. These kids don't need to hear adult stuff. It's not, you know, something that needs to be done. So that was my first concern. My second concern is a very big one with the tech department. So I will tell you that since sixth grade, I've had this issue. The Chromebooks, from me as a parent, I don't allow my kids on certain things. So when these Chromebooks are not blocked from certain sites, and they are allowed to go on whatever they want, whenever they want, it's an issue. I had an issue here at this school. My daughter's Chromebook was taken from another student in lunch, and that student went on to Pornhub. That's very disturbing for me. My child did not know what that was until this happened, until I got... And I didn't get a phone call from the principal. I had to call her after saying that, you know, something needed to be done. This is not my first time bringing this to the middle school administration. I haven't had a problem high school-wise or anything like that. But when they start and they get them in sixth grade, they run with it. And nobody is paying attention to what they're exactly going on. I mean, they can watch Netflix, they can go on all kinds of YouTube videos. I mean, that one thing that just happened with my daughter, it's concerning for me. You know, that's, they should only be able to have access to things that are involved with school and anything that is school-related, especially... I can't monitor 24/7. You know what I mean? It's just not possible. It just shouldn't be available to them. So I'm hoping that maybe that can be addressed as an issue because even, you know, I'm like, okay, I caught you on the site, you're in trouble. I take the Chromebook, and she comes to school and borrows one. Well, those are all available, everything. They can still go back on those sites. So how can I discipline my child if there's nothing? You know, we have to work together here. Do you understand what I mean?
I'm baffled by this one. She's getting on those sites at school?
There was a boy who took her Chromebook. And Dr. Laporte did address it. The child did have, you know, disciplinary, watched the cameras, seen the child take it, and did go in the history. And yes, he was on there. And she, and we had talked about it. And she said that there are a lot of times that they can get on to these different sites. I mean, I'm really struggling with my eighth grader this year. Very, very hard. I adopted her, you know, she's, she has a very high IEP, so she sees other kids doing things. She's a big follower. So if she sees that it's okay that these kids are, be able, like, for instance, I'm gonna give you an example. She's able to open up a Zoom and chat with people from around the world. This is not okay. I don't need people finding out where I live. Technology is a thing of today where anybody can find out where you live through the internet. And that's a concern of mine. I have a four-year-old daughter. I just don't feel comfortable with everything being so wide open and her being able to access this, these Zoom accounts, the Google emails. She came home, had four assignments missing. These are classroom work assignments. Why are classroom work assignments not done? Well, I go in and I look in her history. Google email. These kids are chatting all day on Google email. I have the names, I have screenshots, I have everything. You know, they are in class doing this, and I get it. There's 20-something kids to one teacher. They cannot, and I get that because I'm one of, you know, four kids, and I can't even keep up half the time. So, and I understand that they don't, the teachers probably don't even know that they go on this, but if the classroom work is not getting done because you have this boy and this boy texting you through your Google email and it's coming up, but why are the teachers not recognizing this? Does it not pop up? I mean, I'm not really too, you know, like, I don't know how it works with their Google emails. I don't know how, who sees these. I don't know what they use them for. All I was aware of was that they use them because that's how they get their assignments. So when I see that there are conversations being emailed back and forth between her boys, inappropriate conversations, things like that, how am I, as the parent, supposed to, you know, take and discipline my child or correct my child if it's not being corrected here? So I hope you guys can understand where I'm coming from. I really just needed to, you know, let that out. Because my other daughter, I mean, believe me, she's no angel. She's tried to get away with watching Netflix, because they can get on Netflix. I mean, they can get, you know, on all that stuff. But she learned in sixth grade because she knows I don't play around, you know? But the other one kinda tries to get away with a little more than the other. You always have one or two. She learned really quick. So I just, I don't know, this one's really being slick and getting by, and I'm just, I don't know what to do anymore. As a parent, I need the school's help. I really, really do. I need the school's help with that aspect of the tech situation.
I'm happy to give you a call tomorrow to talk through...
That's perfect. I just wanted to voice my concerns. I wanted to let everybody know, you know, what was going on and be aware, because you guys, you know, are not aware of it. So as long as I can make it aware, I will speak with you tomorrow. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay. Scholarship for the class of '22.
Yes.
St. Paul's?
Jill Fallis. And while Ms. Fallis is on her way down, we were going to recognize, they weren't able to make it tonight, but I would please come, but I want to just give a quick shout-out to our cheerleading team that won our DVC championships. And many of the, we invited the cheerleading team here this evening, but many of them actually are preparing for a dance competition.
Yeah.
As it was described or explained to us from the coach, actually. But the coach did share that they are really grateful to have been offered the chance to come and meet with the school committee. And they, you know, she wishes that she could be here, and so does the team. And they're really grateful for the support from the school committee. So I just wanted to share that before.
Congratulations, Dean.
They made it to states but didn't qualify beyond that.
So for your consideration, we have two scholarships totaling $2,000 for three recipients. So our first is the, will be called the Church of St. Paul Twice-Treasured Thrift Store Scholarship. It will be a $1,000 scholarship, and they're looking for a blind selection, which means no names, so they're not gonna know who it is with that, with their essay. And consideration with academic achievement, leadership qualities, and of course, volunteerism, which I think is super important and makes perfect sense with this scholarship. The second scholarship is the Frederick J. Stone Memorial Scholarship. This is actually two $500 scholarships for a total of $1,000. If you drive into the high school, you may notice the name, Frederick J. Stone. And he's looking, he was a member of the school board for 26 years. He passed away in 2019. And his love for education is something that they would like to continue with. And this is going to go to a scholar-athlete. So we are looking for your approval. We, just to give you an update, I asked Ms. Poirier in our counseling department to get me a number. We've got currently $20,600 in scholarship money, which was for the class of 2021 last year. That is something that we are looking to grow. So if anybody out there listening, or committee members, own a business and would like to sponsor, you may be hearing from us because we think that's something that our graduates deserve and to represent a business from the community is very important. So we hope that you will approve the new scholarships. And I'm hoping I will be here many more times.
There you go.
Say yes. Say yes, please.
We're all hoping you will be here many more times.
It's incredibly generous on both parts of both. I was really excited to see the St. Paul one because that's new and different, and certainly the family of Mr. Stone. It's remarkable. But does anybody want to make a motion to approve these? Technically, three scholarships.
Right.
Second? Second, okay. Nope, that's okay. Moved by Amanda, seconded by Tammy. Is there any discussion or questions?
These will be more than one year. They're expected to be yearly.
Correct. The thrift store is evidently doing quite well. And they, I know that the church, the St. Paul's church is very active in the community and has been partnered with the school department for a number of different things. So yes, they're looking to have that.
Do we have a process for students to submit an essay?
Yes.
We do.
Yep. We have a, what I would guess I would call like a common app, and then certain scholarships ask for other certain pieces. So for this case, we're working out the details with the Stone Memorial Scholarship, but they are asking for an essay. It may be something that they want specific to student athletes. We will cater to whatever their wishes are, but we will also, that essay is also a part of our scholarship process.
Great.
As a, the motion's still open, then I got someone else to share.
And that, these are available in Naviance? Is that where they find all the scholarship stuff? Is that still the case?
That's a good question. Well, once it's approved, it will go up, and that information will go out to the senior class, yeah.
Anyone else? All right, motion on the floor to approve the three scholarships. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Erin? Carrie?
Aye.
Thank you. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any abstentions? Any nays? All right, so approved.
I just want to give another sidebar on this scholarship piece in also talking with Ms. Poirier, who's, we're working on expanding our book awards for our juniors.
Oh, great.
We have already increased this, the number. She was gonna get me a whole list, but she was, she was asking if we had any connections to Stanford University. So if anybody has any connections to Stanford, you need to be recommended for their book award. But while, you know, the Harvard Book Award, we're adding, she's, we came up with six different universities for her to contact today to increase with. So we're really hoping to look and to expand the opportunities for our junior class.
That's great.
Stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jill.
Thanks.
I'll take a book award. I need a book award. Do you have any students, like, do you have to go to the school to use the award?
Yeah. Well, yeah. It depends what it is.
Right.
Like assumption, I think assumption gives...
Like the Harvard Book Award, do you have to go to Harvard?
But a lot of the book awards aren't monetary.
Yeah, the Harvard Book Award is not monetary. It's just an award. But there are some.
Assumption gives...
Yeah. Avery, you got one.
Okay. See, I learned something new. You can teach an old dog new tricks. Okay. Statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Board Authority. So going to take a moment to... Well, I don't know, Tara, maybe you want to do this, but highlight what we have done as a capital planning committee in terms of review of and assessment of our current facilities and a discussion to move forward in renovation and repair. And the process to renovation or repair or replace, and the process to do that does not require, but it's certainly recommended, that you submit a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, who would partner in that endeavor and pick up a percentage, and that percentage will vary depending on the project and the year and the money's available. But a percentage of the project, so that our communities do not have to foot the entire bill of a new building project, whether, again, renovation, repair, or replace. I know that a lot of information has gone out. A lot more information will go out. This is the second, third, or fourth step in a very, very long process. This is not, having a school committee approve a statement, or approve submitting a statement of interest does not bind a town community to anything and does not bind anybody financially to anything. It's expressing that we have a need, and this is one way of addressing that need. If approved, there are multiple steps that include a feasibility study and then a project vote, and it will go to the towns multiple times. So I know we had, at the last meeting, some family members come and express interest about their taxes increasing. This is not a tomorrow. This is not a next year's bill. This is a process and seeing and giving people time to plan and coordinate efforts. This is simply saying, we believe it is time for Blackstone Millville Regional School District to enter this process by submitting a statement of interest to the School Building Authority. And with the background research that we've done and the work that has been done, I believe we can very much show need. And so we'll see if the building authority agrees with this. But did I miss anything?
No, I think you captured it all.
So saying that, I'll entertain your motion. Do you have it? No, you gotta, you gotta read. It's fancy.
I have it. I just wanted to add to that. Do I do it after the motion? I'll do it after the motion.
Okay.
I move to authorize the district administration to submit a statement of interest for a core renovation project to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA. This statement of interest will focus on the district's need to address the physical conditions of the BMR High School.
Here's a second. Thank you, Tim. Okay, yes, go ahead.
I just want to remind people that while we put together a plan, the subcommittee met for over a year, we came up with the plan to renovate the high school, which impacts, renovate the high school and use the middle school, which would require minor renovations. As Jane was pointing out, the process, if we're accepted, goes into the feasibility study, which actually looks at all four of our buildings. It will look further at the possibilities that we have, the configuration. So what we suggested, it may not be the final plan. I know there are people, conversations for it or against it. So just a reminder that if we're accepted, the feasibility will prove out our thought, whether that's a good plan or not. So I just want to make sure people understand that side of it.
Yeah, it would even look to see if there's acreage of land in the community not being used to the best thing, and it would make a great whatever.
So if anyone wants to donate.
Yeah, if anybody wants to donate a big piece of land, no. So a feasibility, so what the building, the capital group has committed or has developed in its plan will shape some of the discussion in the feasibility study, but will not shape the result of it. That will be done by the company that is hired to do that actual study, the work of that study. So it's almost like doing some of the work over again, but with an end, with a specific end project in mind that will be developed by the study. So this is just to see if the state thinks we're as needy as we think we are. Right? So. And I do know that we have the support of the Millville Capital Planning Committee. They voted in their group to support this as well. So we appreciate that. And I know that the Blackstone Capital Group has heard it as well and added to the discussion. And so I think lots of people have information, and we'll be sharing a lot more. So as we go through the spring and the summer, and as we hear from the building authority, we will certainly be scheduling open houses at the high school so people can see what that facility looks like, sessions in the senior centers, sessions in the library. If there's a church that would like to have us come talk, or a... If there's a church that would like to have us come talk or a Elks Club or any kind of organization in the community, we are happy to put together a small group to come and talk and answer questions and question and answer sessions. We have a job to do, but we all have to do it together. So, I hope people will support this motion and I hope our community will support this effort. Does anybody have anything else? Erin or Carrie? Because both of them are on the building committee. Okay.
I just wanted to add, if we are accepted, we would know in this July. So, a little bit of the timeline, as you started, you did mention, but 2027 would be the earliest that we, if we, if it all is approved and, you know, everything goes, it would be 2027 that it would actually come live and affect taxes. So, there's a lot of time for all this planning, just every, it's not happening next tax, you know, this town meeting or, so, there's time to prepare and.
Time to prepare and plan.
Plan.
Yep. Anyone else? All right, there's a motion on the floor to submit statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie or Erin?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so moved. Okay. I don't know, do we have this on there? I don't know.
I am not sure.
We, I think.
It was requested by the school committee.
It was requested that we develop an organizational chart. And so, that has been done. And it was also requested that it get color coded, so you kind of see who's a what.
I was getting ready to walk through it, but I know that Dr. DeFalco is gonna want to, unless you'd like me to stop.
Oh, no, go ahead. Sure.
So, Dr. DeFalco and the leadership team have been working to put this together so that people will understand the organization. And I know that one of the things that may look very different is what people might be thinking is an upside down structure. A lot of times, you'll see an organizational chart that starts with the superintendent and then branches down. But this is very intentionally designed in a different way because our leadership team is aware that we are at the base of this work and our jobs are to support those that are working closer with the students. So, if you follow this chart, it begins with the school committee as governance, moves to the superintendent, then it will move up toward the assistant superintendent, and then branch out into some of the different areas. We have our building leaders, the principals on the left side. We have our, some of our operational pieces of the work toward the center that you will see. We have our nutrition director, facilities director, IT lead, those come under, well, above the assistant superintendent. And then to the right, you'll see the director of learner support services and some of our student support needs and services moving upward. And again, the entire purpose of all of our work gets to the ultimate piece of this chart, which is at the top, which is the students. And everything that everyone underneath is doing is intentional to support the growth of the students in this district. And I wanted to be clear that this chart was designed differently in order to demonstrate that. And it is color coded. As you mentioned, the blue individuals are, they are employees on contract.
Twelve month.
Twelve month. They are twelve month contracted employees. The individuals in orange to the left are Unit B members. The yellow individuals, they're not individuals, but the yellow departments that you'll see are Unit A members. And the pink up top are the Unit C membership.
And athletics and enrichment, no, that's great, Matt. Thank you for that. Athletics and Richmond are not Unit B, but they're kind of a unique, they are stipended positions for Unit A, but we put them off the building principals because they are working directly with the, with those individuals.
Are the, are the yellow on the left and the yellow on the right the same yellow? Because is the school psychologist, are they not part of Unit A?
They're all the same.
They're all Unit A.
Yep, they're all Unit A.
All the yellows A.
Yellows, okay.
Where the building principals evaluate, you know, all the individuals in their buildings, Jill does the direct coordination and support work for the school psychs, team chairs, BCBA's, et cetera. So, we listed those under the district director of learner support services. But all the yellow is Unit A. And the educators box are just classroom teachers.
So, the, but all the blue are twelve month, but some of the pink are twelve month too, aren't they?
Correct. Correct. Yeah, they're signified by the union or individual contracts. So, the blue are individual contracts.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you. Thank you. And next on our agenda is the proposed school calendar for the 2022 school year, which, if approved by us tonight, will be posted on the website.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. It starts with the Unit A staff and staff returning on the Monday prior to Labor Day, which is the twenty, can't see it because it's green. And thank you very much, 29th of August, with professional development days being held on that Monday and Tuesday, the 29th and 30th, and the students returning and starting first day of class on Wednesday, August 31st. That Friday, September 2nd and Monday, September 5th would be the Labor Day weekend holiday. So, for planning purposes, for those folks watching at home, students would begin the academic year on August 31st. There's a bunch of holidays in the fall because there always are. And then start again the second semester on January 3rd. And the academic year would end June 14th. What's the line through the 15th?
15th, it's a half day.
15th is a half day. The half day on the, June 15th.
Under October. The 10th is highlighted as the holiday, which makes sense, the Monday, but on the writing, it says the 11th, so just a typo there.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that.
I should let Tammy have the typo.
We'll fix that, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any, any questions, concerns?
October is spelled wrong on the calendar piece.
Yep, thank you.
Nothing wrong with October.
Trying something new.
There's a couple spelling errors. We're just put it out there.
We'll fix all the spelling errors.
I think indinge it, and I can't even say it.
Is there an I?
I think something.
Is it missing a?
It's so small, I can't even, oh, yeah.
Yep, it's missing an I somewhere. We'll fix it.
I was gonna look it up.
I thought it was just me. I was like, I don't, maybe I spelled it wrong in my head.
I'm like, is there even an I? Like, I can't see it. Even going like this, I can't see it. So, no matter. Good to me.
Did we only have one day back to school this year?
We did.
Okay.
Yeah, so we fixed it. So, the staff are back Monday, Tuesday. Kids, Wednesday, students, Wednesday, Thursday.
I remember thinking there was something funny this year. Yeah, two days at least is, makes it worth your while for students.
Yep.
And then the staff development days are the August 29th, 30th, November 4th, and March 17th.
So, when you have two Labor Day, two days marking Labor Day, what happens for people who work full years? Do they get two days for the Labor Day? How does that work, the twelve month?
So, no, the twelve month, so the Friday, the second, Friday, September 2nd, Unit A and Unit C, 10-month, and Unit B have that day off. The rest of us work. The district's not closed.
On the 2nd?
Correct. We're closed on the 5th. So, all the twelve month employees, if you go back to your org chart, all the blues are working that day. And the twelve month pinks. Let's just Unit C, Unit A and C, the 10-month individuals that are off on the 2nd.
It's a real holiday.
Well, it's June 2nd.
Graduation.
Oh, Lord. Wow, June 2nd, that's, that seems early. Yeah. Oh, God. Love that.
Okay.
Looks good.
That's you, Erin, June 2nd.
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar.
All right. Is there a second? Any more discussion? Okay, moved by Tara, seconded by Amanda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, guys. I heard an aye. All right. Any abstention? So moved.
Thank you.
Did we do the field trip?
Nope, then we go into my report. It's in here, yeah.
Yeah, it is. Yep, 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 got it. Okay.
All right. We're going to hear a brief update this evening from, again, from Ms. Fallis. Jill, thanks for being here. She's just going to give a quick overview on our dual enrollment, middle high school dual enrollment program.
Long time no see.
I know.
Lots of exciting ones.
So, the eighth grade, what I'm calling the eighth grade academy, that's the dual enrollment program. On February 16th, Tanya from the middle school and I held a parent information session and shared with the parents on the call, the Zoom call, with an overview of the program, which included the participation of students in Spanish 1 and Algebra 1. Those are currently programs that they have at the middle school. However, they do not receive high school credit. We tossed around a number of different courses, science being one of the ones that we really wanted to engage in. However, there's a science MCAS, and there was too much of a difference in the curriculum instruction. With math, there's really only one major unit that there would need to be a pause to teach, to be able to hit the MCAS for math. So, that was our thinking. And we have, so now they will actually receive the high school credit for the work that they've been doing all along. After the presentation, all seventh grade families and students received the slideshow with a link to show interest. It was a Google form. It asked the students, not the parents, the students, to fill out a show of interest, to describe themselves as a student, how they view this opportunity as beneficial to their future, and when faced with a challenge in school, what steps do they take to overcome it? So, that was the little, the initial interest. We had a March 4th deadline. We had 23 students who inquired, who filled out the form, completing step one. Step two was teacher recommendation, which has been completed. We had 18 students complete step two. They were asked to go to their counselors to, again, have that little ownership, similar to what they would go through the process if they were looking at other high school opportunities. And 18 of them completed that step. We are now going to look to schedule interviews with each of those students, and we will notify them of their selection in our inaugural eighth grade academy dual enrollment program before April vacation.
That's awesome. So, a student who is accepted into that academy would, would that class, so if they're, if they're 18, it ends up being 18, let's say, they're taking Algebra 1, is it in a class together? Or are they in with ninth graders?
They will. In this case, it will be a one cohort because we can have that as one cohort. They will actually take Spanish 1 first, the first period of the day, and followed by math, the second period of the day. They will have that every day of the week. They will not participate in our drop block. We're still working on that technicality, but they won't participate with the drop block. And then we will, then they'll be able to come back to the middle school at like around 9:35-ish, and then they will assimilate into the classes here.
That's awesome.
That's awesome. Anybody have any questions? That's awesome.
And I just want to give a shout out to Jill and Tanya because they've worked really hard to figure out, because the schedules are different.
Sure.
And a lot of, those aren't, like, on the inside of it, don't necessarily see, like, oh, it's not a big deal, they just start there and go there, like, not really. The schedules are super unique and different in each building, and the times are off a little bit, too. So, getting that, that kind of merging back into the middle school schedule, it took, it took quite a bit. So, I know that you and your team, and Tanya and her team have done a ton of work on just getting that piece right. So, I'm super appreciative that you've done that so that our students can have the opportunity to do, to do that.
Those kids in this cohort will actually have more time on learning.
That's awesome.
Because we start earlier and they end later, so just don't tell them.
And also for the parents that are tuning in, that, you know, the students that didn't apply, it actually works out well for them, too, because those groupings will be smaller.
Sure, sure, sure.
Because the 18 or however many that get selected. And that is a really good thing as we start thinking about. Exactly. And we start thinking about the different levels of interventions and things we want to do.
And that also allows on the, on the back end for them as juniors and seniors to really concentrate on a pathway that they're looking for, that we're working really hard on at the high school, to create these pathways and have some clear opportunities. If I'm interested in X, I should take this, this, and this, or also engage in our QCC college dual enrollment.
That's right. And speaking of pathways, Ms. Fallis and I will be meeting up tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM at Norfolk Aggie to be delving deeply into their animal science program, to see just what it's all about. So, we get a lot of interest there. We study that closely.
Don't buy a horse. Don't come back with a mule.
We ride a horse back to town.
Don't come back with a mule.
Oh, no. I've done that once. I'm not doing that again.
Any questions for Ms. Fallis? Yes, Tammy?
What, how many years of Spanish are available at BMR?
We currently, right now, have four for in-person instruction. We also offer AP with our virtual high school.
Thank you.
That's not to say that we wouldn't offer AP as well. I happen to know a teacher who is very anxious to have that opportunity to do so.
Well, the 18, go all the way.
There you go.
And I asked that question because, you know, for the more prestigious colleges, they want to see three years or more, if you can fit them in. So, two for, you know, the typical standard college, but three and four for, you know, an Ivy or a, some of those upper echelon.
So, with that consideration, they will have received that.
I know we've had a hard time with, oh, sorry.
No, that's right.
Filling those Spanish spots, so I wasn't sure where we were at for how many years available.
So, then that will mean that they will already have Spanish 1 and 2. So, if they only wanted to do the requirement for graduation, their requirement for Spanish would be met after freshman year, which would really open up all of that. However, that also offers, if you want to take three years of a language, you could have that completed at the end of your sophomore year, which then opens up all. So, that's really exciting for those students who have this opportunity.
Do you have a contingency for students moving into the district over the summer?
I do not. It would probably be close to that based on the numbers. But that's something we can consider. I did mention, because we have, like I said, there were 23 students, so there were seven students who, my man, who didn't, who didn't, who didn't go the second step. So, there's a question of whether they, they meant to and didn't. So, I sent that email actually today. So, we'll find out more.
The reason I ask is there's, you know, other, other systems out there, other states where they have gifted and talented students that are in a progressive track like this. They move into the district, the door gets closed on them, they stop learning.
Excellent point.
Yep. I think we could talk about what, what a potential on-ramp might look like for them.
Particularly for new students.
Yep.
That's kind of an asterisk. So, yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
You should have a great evening.
Thank you, Jill. Ms. Rodriguez, if you could join us up front. Sarah, our district social worker, is here to talk a bit about the Comfort Zone Camp and give a little bit of an overview of what this is and what we are looking to do. It's actually not a camp that's run by us, but it's one that we are, we have recommended and referred students to in the past. And this year, we've had quite a few students who have experienced real significant loss, and we want to be as supportive as we can to these families. So Sarah, do you want to share?
Sure. Hi, hi, everyone.
Hi, Sarah.
So Comfort Zone Camp, it is a camp, actually, someone from one of the schools, I believe it was this school, actually told me about this program. I looked into it, because as Jason just said, we do have a lot of students that have lost a parent, some have lost a sibling, some have lost a grandparent or a caretaker. So this camp is a free camp, and they are offering two camps this coming year, one in June and one in September. It's an overnight, it's three days and two overnights. Eligibility is kids that are age 7 to 17, 18 if they're still in high school. And basically, the kids are, are pretty much going there. They're hooked up with what's called an adult mentor, and they are involved in support groups. They're learning coping skills. They're talking about their grief experience while they are there. Again, like I mentioned, it is a free camp to kids. So we have been fortunate enough to, I've had all the schools send the flyer to the families of those kids that we have identified that have had a loss, to see if families are interested in sending their, their child to this camp. And at this point, right now, we do have three, but I, I'm hoping and expecting possibly a few more to express interest in this camp. It is quite a distance. It's, it is all the way in, on the Cape and Sandwich. So we would like to send our students, it is a free camp, but I think the barrier that we face with sending some of these kids is transportation, for these kids to get to this camp.
And so on that note, what we would look to do is, we would look to utilize our van and, and transport the students on the, I think it's the Friday afternoon.
Yes.
Down to Sandwich, and then go back on Sunday and pick them up. So that, you know, with, with the transportation barrier, the students wouldn't necessarily be able to go. So we want to try to provide some assistance to the families that opt in, who have already lost quite a bit, to try to at least take that barrier out of the way. And so we would look for the school committee's approval to, for the overnight trip, because it is an overnight, even though it isn't our, you know, it's not a school camp, but it is a trip that our students would go on, with parental permission, of course, but also look for the approval for our van driver, so we can send, we could take the students down and go back and get them.
I will entertain a motion, then I'll ask my question.
I move.
Okay. How about you, second?
I'll second.
I move by Tammy, seconded by Tim.
I think it was Tara, actually.
Oh, it was, oh, it was, sorry. All right, thank you, Karen. I'm saving my comments. The, the families who have expressed, well, first, first question. How many seats does our van hold?
The new van, we can hold up to 10, yeah.
10. So we could go up to 10, okay. So we would be approving this for up to 10, no more than 10. But the families who have expressed interest so far, the three, they understand that there won't be a BMR person down there with, like, they
Correct.
Bring them, have a great weekend.
Yes.
Burn and get them.
So what I can tell you is the three that we already have, I've made the referrals. I myself made the actual referral, and within two days, they're contacting the family directly.
Wow.
And they're talking to them through that whole process. What is actually unique about this camp is they also have parent programs and parent camps, and they have a lot of stuff that's going on online as well, for kids that can't get to the camp.
Anyone else have questions?
I think it's nice.
I think it's wonderful. All right. There's a motion on the floor to approve an overnight program, I don't know what you want to call it, but for students in the district, up to 10, and to use a district van and van driver to transport the students to the camp and to pick them up on the return Sunday. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Anyone opposed? Any abstention? All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
And if there are others that are listening, and please reach out to Sarah. She's marvelous, and she will hook you up, as they say.
And Sarah, great work on this, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Pretty cool.
Karen, right on cue for our, just a very quick COVID-19.
How'd you know, Karen?
I printed out the agenda. And we haven't talked about COVID in a while, so, you know, I know it's everyone's favorite topic. So I went through the handbook from beginning to end and updated to more fit the current protocols and best practices. So a lot is getting eliminated. Not everything quite yet, but a lot of it. So I put together the sheet just to kind of summarize what, if you have any questions as far as more detail on everything, just let me know. So in the first one, the chorus stuff can, can be eliminated. The band, I just changed "never" to "not" because, I don't know, personally, sharing instruments, just where you're blowing into it, just is
Not a good idea.
Yeah. Number two, eliminate the in-school close contact and contact tracing language. For number three, eliminate the original policy and protocols and replace it with the new masking requirements. And I eliminated the transportation requirements, since that has already been voted on. In number, number seven, we've not been sending letters to providers, because the majority of people are testing at home, and it's not necessary. In the home monitoring, I suggested eliminating the travel language. Also, in number 10, eliminating the travel protocol. 11, changing from that staff and students must wear masks to they may. Again, eliminating travel language. Adding that masks should be worn until symptoms are fully resolved. Eliminating the social distance. There was no number 15, and then the
We just didn't like that number.
Yep. And then the close contact protocol was updated to also eliminate the test and stay and the in-school contact tracing.
Anybody have any questions for Karen?
Can I just clarify the A, 1A in the court, the yellow stuff, that's eliminated?
That, yeah. Yellow is eliminate, green is
Okay. I just wasn't sure, because everywhere else it just said eliminate, so I wasn't sure why that was so special.
Have, have you, since the optional mask usage, have you visited most of the schools?
I have not been over to Millville, I think, but I've been in the other three.
But are 50/50, 20, 30?
I've been in all four. You're like 95/5.
Yeah.
95 not wearing.
Right.
So
And at 5% at the most.
So I'm actually, I'm glad to hear that, not because I want everybody to have a mask off, I want everybody to have a choice. But I had a conversation today with an administrator from a different district who said, in the high school, about 80% of the students are still wearing their masks, not because they feel the need to wear the mask or not for a health reason, but it, but they're wearing hoods and masks, and I don't have to engage, and nobody has to know what I'm thinking, feeling, and it's another way to just kind of escape. And so I'm really, really, really glad that's not happening, you know?
No, we are not doing that. You'll see kids twirling them. Like snapping each other with it, you know? But they're not, yeah, no, they're not doing that.
Yeah. It's, it's a small percentage.
Yeah, good, okay. Some kids still wearing them on their chins, but that's not new. We just don't have to tell them to pull them up anymore.
I'll sit where it's so they wear it, but they're not really wearing it.
But they're just like chin hammocks or whatever they, yeah.
Or the makeup's not good that day.
Maybe they have a breakout in the deciding.
Save on makeup that way.
Right? I'm telling you.
Not having a good day, just put on the mask.
Anyone else, questions? Does this need us to approve?
Yeah.
All right.
I move that we accept them as written.
As written?
Second.
Second? All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Anybody opposed? All right. Any abstentions? All right. Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
There's not much else to change, Karen, so, you know?
No. No, I mean, probably the next step will just be eliminating the, the handbook.
COVID protocols, there you go.
Yeah.
Number 15 won't be the only one that's not there.
There you go, let's hope, right? Thank you for what you've done once again.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The next item in my report, I touched on a little bit briefly earlier. If you recall back to our workshop with our elementary principals and our math, district-wide math committee in January, they had done a major amount of work in the past year and a half to get to the point where they were putting a recommendation to, to, forward to the school committee. And I thought they did a really nice job of explaining why they had selected the programs that they did. And let me just do a quick highlight on those. For grades K through 8, we have looked at moving forward with the HMH Holton Mifflin Hall Court math program called Intuit Math. And for the high school, we have moved forward, or they have moved forward with the recommendation for Savvas. And we've had multiple conversations with staff members. We've had multiple conversations with both of the vendors, and recently had a, had a really positive conversation with the Department of Education, and some good news, and we'll talk about the proposals in a minute. But the Department of Education has agreed to fund approximately $80,000, which they will actually, kind of the nice thing about this, they'll pay it directly to the vendor. We don't even have to worry about it. We send them the, which I already have, we send them the proposal, and if it's approved by the committee, they will cover the $80,000 or up to $80,000 of the actual cost for the K to 8 program.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Which is really great.
Yep.
So let me just kind of walk through how we got here, and how we got to the $80,000 mark. It's kind of interesting. So a one-year cost for Intuit Math grades K to 8 is actually about $85,000. And there was a consumable or annual cost of about $30,000 that the district would have to pay. We don't and haven't negotiated deals like that. We don't do one-year programs and, you know, changing programs every year, and we don't do that. So there was a lot of back and forth, but through some, some strong negotiations, we got the Intuit Math to a six-year, just like we've done with our other programs, zero reoccurring costs for $145,000. And that's the, and that is the proposal that's in front of you. Or $149,000.
49, I'm like, wait a minute.
$149,608.
Thank you.
So the proposal, then, I forwarded to the Department of Education. So it's kind of interesting how it works. So the Department of Education will pay for one year of a program. So that's where the $80,000 number comes in from. So we actually send the department the one-year estimate they gave us, and they pay the one-year estimate. But because of how we negotiated, that's more than half of the actual program. So we're in really good shape as far as that's concerned. They will not cover the high school program. And again, the high school is set up the same way. It's a six-year program cost with zero annual consumables, just like the K through 8. So these are one-time expenses. We will not have to pay for anything. The only thing we may want to do, and we found this with Wonders, because we're in year two, we've bought and paid for additional staff training. But even that, the Wonders program have, they've been really great about hooking us up with, with their vendors and providers that actually don't work for them. And we've got training at a fraction of a cost of what it would have cost us to go through the actual vendor. So we're really, we've had some really good relationship building there, and some good luck setting up that training. So I just say all of that with the notion that we could get into, you know, this time next year, and the math teachers at the secondary level, and the elementary school teachers say, you know what, really could benefit from a couple more days of training. So we may have to go back and do that. But that isn't usually a heavy lift, and it's not typically very expensive, the way we've done it. So what I would look for from the committee this evening, and just to give you a sense, for the two programs, the total cost for six years with no reoccurring costs is $222,000 for $184. But we would not ask the committee to move to spend that, because we have the $80,000 that we're going to pay towards it. So we would actually need $142,000 for 84 for both programs.
And we set aside $150,000, correct?
We did. So we're actually under that.
Yes, we are.
You're under that amount.
Good job, gentlemen. So I, I have questions, but I'll entertain a motion to approve $142,484.
I so move.
Thank you. For the math curriculum, anybody, second?
Second.
All right, by two. Okay. Any discussion or questions?
Yes.
Go.
With the digital license, are these, is the material updated on a regular basis, or is it just locked in for six years with content that gets stale?
No, it's updated. There, there are times, though, where you might have to pay, what is it, like a up charge? I'm not sure what the right term is for that. But no, the material will be updated.
Okay. Next question is how do we deliver it that's digital? So is that something they pull up on their Chromebook? Is there a requirement for a workbook in addition to this?
Yes. So it's both. So there is a workbook, there is like a hard copy text, and there is a digital, a digital side. I will tell you, having a, having a 10th grader at home that has Savvas as their core program, I found his textbook for the first time, and it doesn't even have a crease in it. So I might, I'm mentioning that because my sense is a lot of the students will probably use the online components to it. But there is a text and workbook that comes along with it.
So my question. Anybody else have any? Carrie, Kara?
I have one, but I'll wait for you.
So I am just curious, because I am envisioning Algebra 1 that I take as an 8th grader, check. Geometry that I take as a 9th grader, check. Algebra 2, I take my junior year, check. Precalculus, I take my, no, wait, that was, Algebra 2 is my sophomore year now. Precalculus, my junior year. Where's calculus?
Yeah, we don't have it in the program. It's not part of the program. We have a calculus.
We have a calculus.
We do, oh, yes, yeah. And I believe, Jill, you can speak to it. I think most of the kids that are taking calc are in the AP Calc, right?
It's a pre-AP calculus program and a, and a calc program.
That is not in, that is not in
That's the College Board standards.
Say that, I'm sorry, say that again.
The AP calculus program is using the College Board standards.
So there is no calculus for somebody who doesn't want to take AP?
Correct.
Wow.
So that's calculus A and a calculus B? So that's calculus A and a calculus B?
I don't have, I don't have, I don't know if I've read it, I'm not sure. I know there are different calculus programs, tests, but I'm not sure which one is.
Okay.
Is it updated?
Is what updated?
The calculus.
How old is that textbook?
Well, no, 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 it's college, so if they're following the College Board, it's updated annually by the College Board and the curriculum that is essentially mostly digital.
Okay.
So there really isn't.
I think that's where Timmy was trying to go.
Oh. Is that where you were trying to go as well?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, A, I wanted to make sure we had calculus.
Right.
When we talk about trying to get into an AP, I mean, you can't get into.
Yeah, well, and particularly we're, we're upcharging, if you will, our, our eighth graders. And if math is something that moves them, we don't want to end them at pre-cal.
We have pre-cal and calculus.
Or in junior year.
Or in junior year.
Yeah, no, agreed.
My only question is technical, did we miss proposal?
We're okay, yeah, no, we're fine. Yeah, like the, they know that I explained to the, both vendors that the school committee was meeting this evening, and they understood they were.
Oh, for the date?
Yeah, for the proposal expiration, yeah. So they know to.
Good eye, Amanda.
They'll be looking for the email tomorrow, I'm sure, but, or later this evening.
So I just thought of another question, and this is, if we go with this, how does this fit into our proposed dual enrollment with the Quinn-Sigman?
Say more.
Well, this is our math curriculum, which is what we're looking at going with.
Yep.
But we have students that we're looking at, juniors and seniors, or just seniors for right now, doing a dual enrollment between high school and Quinn-Sigman College, or community college. So how would this play into that, the scenario?
Math wasn't one of the classes, I don't think.
Are you?
Was math one of the courses they could take?
Math one oh one and one oh two. And I'm looking right on the, I'm on the Quinn-Sigman website right now to see.
I'm trying to say the question.
I believe that that is different than the calculus.
Are you asking how does this prepare the students for that, or are you asking what's the difference in the courses, like?
I'm just looking at this.
I understand.
I'm trying to see the parallel with this and that particular program, because what she's talking about in Math one oh one, one oh two is mostly a preparatory math leading up to college algebra. So if our students take, or go through our program, say an eighth grader goes all the way through the program, then they will have a calculus-based education and not need that from Quinn-Sigman, which we're champion, championed in that direction.
So Tim, I love that you are so optimistic that high school students leaving high school in Massachusetts or with this curriculum don't need even developmental math or Math one.
Oh, I know they will.
Or two, but they will.
I know. I remember my days as an English tutor in, in school, and people could not identify nouns and verbs.
But my, but, so, but to answer your question without being facetious, if you will, I have to believe a student who would duly enroll and take Math one oh one and one oh two is not a student taking the pre, you know, because if I'm taking AP Calc, I want to get my credits that way.
Absolutely.
And not get, so I might take the English one oh one and one oh two.
My sense is they wouldn't take the math course, that's what I was thinking too, Jill.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, I mean, I know at C.C.R.I., they, you take the Accuplacer to tell you where you are at math, which dictates what math you would take if you were enrolling at the, at the college level anyway, so.
And I don't think UCC is any different. I think it's the same.
I would imagine.
Same process.
What they take, but I'm sure there's a, the Accuplacer.
Let's not go there. Okay. Any other questions?
One hundred and one oh one are college algebra.
Yep, that's what I figured. They were college algebra.
Calculus.
Not really.
And they both, I will tell you that both of those at Quinn-Sigman do transfer to any other four-year institute. So they're not ones that only get credit there, they do transfer. That I do know, which is good. Anybody else? Anyone else? Anybody on Zooma, 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 Zoom? Have any questions? Okay. Motion on the floor to approve the math curriculum with the two different contracts. I can't pronounce that one, so you see them in front of you. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Anyone opposed? Okay, so moved.
The teachers will be absolutely thrilled. Thank you, that's, that's awesome.
And, and we do thank the math curriculum committee for the work that they did. I know they looked at a whole lot of two plus two.
It was a long journey for them. I'm really proud of the, of the team on that. They're going to be psyched, thank you. Then we can get moving with the securing of the materials, the training, the rollout. Now the real work begins. So thank you for that. Speaking of the real work.
The real work.
Here we go.
Here we go.
My mid-year evaluation. Whoop, looks like Jess is getting that on the slideshow. So first and foremost, thank you very much to Tim and Erin, who sat with me and had kind of, did some pre-work to think about the layout of this, the material, how best to kind of frame out the evidence. And then before this arrived to all of you Tuesday, they then met with me again, actually on Monday, and walked through everything to make sure that the way we laid it out and the information we had made sense. I do want to mention, you notice this is not a binder, just want to bring that to everyone's attention.
And that is much appreciated.
Yes. And what hopefully you also saw was I tried to use fewer pieces of evidence and link it to more things. So you could see some of the focus indicators, I used some similar pieces, or same pieces of evidence with that. And so I actually want to walk fairly quickly through some parts of it, because I want to spend more time on the student performance information, because I do think that that's probably, not probably, but is, the most important as far as looking at if all of the work we're doing is actually making a difference on student learning, which I would pose strongly this evening that it is. And the truth is in the numbers, frankly.
What I was gonna say, we'll see that in a few moments.
So we'll, so we'll talk through that. But just to remind everybody, very briefly, of the focus standards for this year, and this the school committee approved back in October. And again, the idea is to take a fairly large rubric and really just kind of drill it down to a few things, to, for me to focus on and to work through this year with our team. And as much as, and I shared this with the leadership team, I sent them this last week as a draft, as much as this is an evaluation of my work, it's an evaluation of the team's work. Because this is the work that we are doing as a district. I just have the pleasure of having the evaluation done publicly.
Well, they can come and have it done publicly as well.
So these are the standards that you will see reviewed this evening. Our, my first goal, my professional practice goal, is anchored in our district strategic plan, very briefly, that we will have a portrait of a grad, we will have our, you're getting in my head, Jill, with the portrait of a graduate. We'll have our district blueprint two point O anchored in our portrait of a graduate done by the end of the year. And for the evidence for this goal, very simply, it is essentially an overview of the workshops and materials to date that we were at. And the school committee has very much been participating in that. And I actually just want to say this, at my mid-year evaluation meetings with all of the administrators and our leadership team, and just most recently, actually, I did Matt and Jill's, and we kind of chuckled at the end of each of the, because they could have just been our standing meeting. That to me is a really good indicator that we're just working together. And I will say that the meeting with the principals was the same. Because we meet every week, we're doing learning walks, we're in the buildings, we're talking about the progress. Their middle-of-year evaluation meetings almost felt like just a general weekly meeting that we have all the time. That's a good thing. That means that we know the work, we're in the work, and we're partnering together through that.
But there are no surprises.
Exactly how it should be. So again, I hope that as we're walking through some of this, you're like, yeah, we've already talked about this stuff. Right? If I'm doing my job right, that's how the committee should feel. Next is our district improvement goal around, and we were intentional about the language, the academic acceleration, which we're going to talk about the student performance numbers soon. And the evidence is listed on slide seven that walks through this. And I do want to just highlight a couple of things, because this was a really interesting goal for me and for our leadership team this year. We are doing so much work in this area, and we are, we are spending so much time in classrooms, in data meetings, looking at student work, meeting with teachers and talking about student performance, meeting with teachers and talking about teacher performance, and looking at all the, the levels of intervention that we can provide and support we can provide on both levels. So what, what is included in the packet this evening is evidence of that work, but what, what you probably noticed in looking at that is I tried to provide a balance. A couple of evaluations back, the committee had given me some feedback that was like, you know, don't go so heavy on agendas and like tools, and like, we will actually want to see examples. So what I provided to you this evening is a little bit of a balance, where you'll see some tools that we provided around tiered supports for staff. And then what you'll also see though are real examples of data meetings. And I thought it was important to do that, of course they're redacted, there's no teacher names and student names, but I thought it was important to do that because I want to show the committee the authentic work. Like this is actually what this work looks like. So in addition to the student performance data in your packet, you do have evidence of some data meetings and some different tools that we're using to help provide support to our students and teachers with that.
You've taken a book out of the math page that we have.
Yes.
Smallest type.
You definitely do a lot in Google Sheets.
I don't know. It's all good.
For our focus on diversity, equity, inclusion, and that all means all, again, you'll see, and I, it's interesting, because you will see that the first three pieces of evidence for this goal are actually student performance outcomes. And it should be, because this should all link back to helping our students grow. And so we did, I did use that evidence here as well. But there are some other pieces that I really wanted to highlight this evening of work that we're doing in this area. After the student achievement evidence, you will see a example of a student shadow protocol. And what the district leadership team did is, we decided that if all means all, and we can't just talk that talk, we have to walk the walk, and in order for us to do that, we need to go out and see what is a student experience for our students who are, and we defined it as kind of living on the margins. So students who might be LGBTQ and out, students who are maybe students of color, students who are special needs, English language learners, students who are living in that free and reduced lunch kind of threshold. And what we decided to do was to split up, each one of us spent a day shadowing a student. And, and we had a protocol that we created together, that we followed individually that protocol, and then came back as a leadership team and huddled up, and had a so what now what conversation. What did you see? What did you hear? What did you learn? And what do we need to do about that? What we thought was going to be a one-session kind of leadership team debrief turned into three. And we're still talking about it, frankly. That is how much we have learned about going out and just shadowing a student that is not a, you know, kind of a typical, if you will, traditional kind of student.
What conversations were had with the students before you showed up to shadow?
We didn't, we didn't tell the student. We didn't.
Hello?
We did not want to tell the student, because we didn't want them to show up any different than they would any other day. So this was all anonymous.
And we did not discuss any of it with the teachers either.
Or the families or anybody else.
Nope, we just need.
Because we didn't want the teachers to act differently with those students.
Not side by side. If you were student A, I probably sat in that corner.
So they didn't necessarily know they were shadowing?
And we're in the classrooms all the time, honest to God, so it really like.
So this wasn't a, be a principal for the day and sit in my chair. This is just watch and observe.
We went in and sat in the back, and we just, we observed behavior.
Okay.
And the teachers did, like, the teachers knew what we were doing, and actually were really helpful, frankly, in like the debrief of the, of the protocol, they were really, really helpful. Because we don't know the students like they know the students. So they were able to give a lot of really good insight. And it was fascinating. It was absolutely fascinating to watch their interactions with each other, to watch the interactions with the teacher, to watch the interactions with the material, to watch the change in student behavior based on the setting they were in. To watch students like our English language learners, I shadowed an English language learner student in second grade, and how this student was constantly trying to anchor everything back to his home culture, and talked about it at nauseam all day with anybody who would listen. And this student has been with us for two years, not new. And it's, and it was just so interesting to gather as much information as we could and to really delve into that. And so the leadership team really kind of anchored in this notion of, it is just as important how we show up as why we show up. And I actually think I accidentally emailed that, emailed to you all, and I thought it was to the leadership team, but, and we just had such deep enriching conversations about how we can work best to support all of our students. And so that protocol is in there. The other protocol that, or resource, as you know, I'm on the, I'm on the state, the Mass Ready, it's called, the Mass Ready Team, and have presented in multiple statewide conferences, have led multiple trainings around diversity, equity, inclusion work. This is specific to racial equity, diversity, inclusion. And what I included in your packet is actually the guide that I was part of developing. And have spent a significant amount of nights, weekends, et cetera, putting this together, but also training the Worcester County superintendents, the Blackstone Valley superintendents, and recently at our winter convening, the entire superintendent association of Massachusetts. And so we are putting a lot into this, because the individual and the uniqueness of each one of our students matters, every single one of them. And it's important that we're ready to support each unique student. So I wanted to show the committee what that guide looks like. And the other is a kind of a neat exercise that we're doing. As you know, our Chargers for Change group at the high school, our social justice group has been doing a lot of work in, in this area as well. And they came forward to our leadership team with a proposal. So you'll see in your packet as a piece of evidence, sixty different, I think that's actually sixty-three, but different, unique children's books, that are all focused around diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging, and asked if they could, if we could purchase those texts. We said, maybe, not yet, let's read them first. So the leadership team, Jill and members and her advisors, myself, Matt, Jill, PG, we all kind of huddled up, we purchased one text, and we split up the sixty books, and we all read, you know, five or six books. And had an opportunity to kind of debrief with each other, because you got to be careful. You know, I have seen schools get into a lot of trouble over just buying stuff and not reading it first. And if we're going to put books in our libraries and in front of any of our students, never mind our youngest, you know, learners, we need to make sure we've read them first. I know that sounds kind of intuitive and like, why wouldn't you do that? But believe it or not, that doesn't always happen. So we spent a lot of time reading through all of these texts and processing them with one another. And then what will happen in the spring, and there'll be a lot of lead time and information out to families and teachers, and, but the, the high school students actually want to go into the elementary classrooms and read them, and spend some time with the elementary students, reading to them. And I will also mention that at our community reading day last week, some of these texts were actually in the mix. And we, some of them have already been read, which were really, they were really, really powerful in stores. So still a lot of work happening in our D E I space. The next district improvement goal is around capital planning, and again, because of how we're doing the work, it was all, this is all evidence that you know. And we just voted this evening, as you know, to submit the statement of interest. So that goal is clearly moving in a very good direction. And the smaller capital planning work, as Matt had mentioned earlier, is underway with that team, that cross-team from our joint committees and boards to put together those priorities with that. So what is all of this leading to? So what is all of this leading to? And that is truly how we envision this work. All of this work is, is supporting and driving our student learning. I want to take a few minutes and just walk through our, our STAR data. Now, I want to preface this with, we know this is only one data point. We get it. It's just one, not the end all be all. But I will say it's an important one. This is our interim assessment. It's what we have determined as a district, we would use as an ongoing assessment. But I want to share that what happens in between this beginning and middle and the middle and end of year are additional PLCs, our professional learning community meetings, data meetings, where authentic student work is being looked at. So I want to, I want to underscore that because we're not just stopping the work with this. Like this is just one piece. And not for anything, this may or may not equate to improved outcomes in MCAS. I don't know. We're not sure. But I do want the committee and the community to know, and a good example of this, our next round of, of data meetings, we're meeting with school-based teams looking specifically at student writing. And we're going to use the SLICE protocol to sit down a group of adults that will have 100 samples of writing that we're going to split up and we're going to actually look for patterns, trends, and next steps to help inform where do we need to go with that particular assignment. So we are going to the granular level of actually authentic work. But as far as STAR goes, I wanted to highlight this evening, both the performance as far as achievement and also growth. And I won't read through all the numbers because they, they speak for themselves. But as far as our English language arts results go, you will see by mid-year where we are with our proficiency or meeting and exceeding numbers, and you'll see the differences in terms of growth and achievement. And I want to highlight with the exception of grade six, which I'm going to talk about sixth grade in a few minutes, every single grade level is moving in the right direction. Some more aggressively than others. But how many times in our four years have we sat here and, you know, like three of the grades made progress and the others were flat or didn't move or went backwards frankly? So, and I want to remind the committee and the community, we are in year two with our new core programming. And so while I will be the first one to say programs don't teach, teachers teach, we've got to give the teachers the right tools. And this to me says, we're moving in the right direction. If you look at the next slide, we'll see the same for mathematics. And again, while we do not have our new core program, but we will, thank you very much for that this evening, again, with the exception of, in this case, it was both sixth grade and 10th grade, you're seeing a, a forward momentum, forward progress. And again, some more aggressive than others as far as achievement. But you can see that the district is moving in the right direction largely. The next two, the next slide speaks specifically to the not meeting results for English language arts. So you can see where some grade, again, some grade levels are moving more assertively than others, some are more, are just flat frankly, and only moving a point or two. I will tell you an interesting piece of work that's happening now with this, just so the committee is aware, the students that are in this not meeting column are not necessarily the ones that were in the beginning of the year not meeting columns. So what the teachers have done, working with the instructional coach, is gone through those unique class lists and identified the exact students. So they know who's moving and who's not, and providing through our RTI model, our response intervention model, additional interventions for them. We just had an RTI meeting, district-wide RTI meeting this week to look at where our programs are and where we need to go. I will tell you, the elementary schools are really accelerating their MTSS, the multi-tiered system of support model, and are almost at a place where we're nearing proficiency of what this model should look like. The middle school has made some great growth and we'll talk about that in a minute in terms of getting their model right. And the high school just has a totally different setup because of MCAS and because of that being a competency determination for graduation and students that need that double dose. So it's just a different model altogether. And you can see the results for, for mathematics as well. And again, we know we have a lot of work in math to do and that work is certainly underway and we're excited about having the program, the new core program in the hands of our staff. The real story I think is told here, starting with our growth slide on Slide 17. And I realize I'm moving fairly quickly through the numbers, but I know we'll go back to questions. I want to remind the community, or anyone that's tuning in, that the growth target is 50. I also want to remind the community that the STAR test, while MCAS is a state exam, STAR is a nationally normed exam and is used by thousands of districts across our country. Our results are in that same bucket. So they're in with the sixth grade student or the third grade student in Los Angeles public schools that took it, or, you know, Westchester County in New York or wherever. So we have, you know, whoever's using this, our kids are in that bucket. That's important to note because of our growth rates. So the average growth is 50. You can see clearly the number of grade levels that have far exceeded the expected growth of 50. Second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, 10th grade. Again, with the exception of grade six, every grade level in ELA has accelerated beyond the 50th percentile in growth. And in some grades, grade two, grade three, grade four, grade five, grade seven, grade eight have far exceeded the expected growth rates. That's how I know what we're doing is working. The story is told in our growth. Achievement matters. I'm the first person, Jill and I have this conversation all the time, achievement matters, proficiency matters. But at the end of the day, we're not going to get there without moving here. Math, it's a bit of a different story. We know we have more work to do. You can see the math growth is a little more, a little more scattered. Grade two is at 47, grade three is at 63, again, grade four, grade five, excellent growth, grade six is, you know, is struggling. Grade seven and eight is over that 50th percentile marker, which is, which is very strong for, for middle school. We've sat here many times where those numbers have been far lower than 50 frankly. And we know grade nine and 10, we need some work done. Which one of the, one of the pieces of evidence in your packet this evening underneath our acceleration is a data meeting that we had after the beginning of year results at the high school, where I will tell you Jill, probably Jill Fowles probably said all of two words, that meeting was driven by her instructional leadership team for the first time in my four years, which was incredibly impressive. Not only did Jill not have to speak, but that team was all there and they drove that The next few slides focus on our students with special needs. And we did something a little bit different with this this year. We actually put the numbers of students.
Yeah.
And I think that's important because we've sat here and we've, we've kind of talked around this issue before with, yeah, but that's three kids and three kids, you know, can make the percentages look really skewed. So what we did was we included all of the students that are in individual education plans and ELA that took our assessment. So you can see grades two through 10, all of our students that took the tests on, that are on IEPs for English language arts. And then we put the specific numbers of students not meeting. Because we really wanted to give the committee a sense of how many students we're talking about. So when we look at grade two, for instance, you have 36% meeting exceeding and beginning of year to 18% middle of year, right? Which is problematic, we understand that. When you look at the not meeting numbers, that's 27%, it's three students. So while we're working to move those three students, and by the way, those three students may have still grown. And when you look at the growth rates for special ed, they are just these students. You are going to see some major improvements across the district, which is really, really to be celebrated. So this gives you a good snapshot of the actual number of students not meeting expectations in English. Similarly with math, this will tell you the specific numbers. But again, I want to look at the growth. So if you look at, if you look at Slide 21, these are the students with special needs that we just looked at, those, those same number of students as far as their achievement goes. Look at the growth rates. This is why we included this in our diversity, our equity, diversity, and inclusion work. Because we are being very intentional about how we are providing services, how we're looking at data, how we're supporting teachers in the classroom. Look at the growth. 70 issue in third grade, clearly it's much lower. Fourth grade, 62, 76. Again, we have a challenge in grade six, we're going to talk about in a few minutes. Grade seven, 62. And look at the high school, grades nine and 10. 77, our students are growing in these 77th percentile nationwide of growth. Grade 10 in the 70th percentile. There is so much here to be celebrated. This is English language arts.
Maybe you see 10th grade math.
And look at, and look at mathematics. Again, concerns with second grade, we talked about that with the achievement numbers. Grade three came in right at the 50th percentile, right on average growth. But look at the rest of the growth. Grade six and seven is a challenge, we're working through that. And again, we'll talk about that. 10th grade grew in the 91st percentile. So there is a lot of data here to celebrate. Before I go into the, the next steps, I do want to just talk briefly about the sixth grade, and I also want to talk about what we did with the data. I actually, it took some time, but I think it was really important to do. I emailed every single team in our school system, K through the high school in each department, to talk about the results and to really express my gratitude for the work they're doing in this area because this takes a major amount of time, effort, and energy. And while some, you know, tuning in might say, well, yeah, that's the work of the teacher. That's not the work of every teacher. This is happening because of the work of our teachers. You can go to any district around us and I am telling you for certain, you will not see the level of work that our staff is doing. And we are getting results. We have a long way to go still, but we are getting results. So we thought it was important, I thought it was important to, to reach out to each one of our grade level teams and our departments to just share just how appreciative and humbled I am by the work they're doing and the results that we're getting. Now for the sixth grade team, we've done a few things. And I just want to run through these to share with the committee. We have reassigned our interventionists and how we're, how they're allocating time. We've reassigned them to spend more time with our grade six students and staff to provide assistance to the classroom teacher. And one of the things that I, I think the middle school has done, and Matt is partnering side by side with the middle school, and I think it was a really good next step that they have decided to put in place, they're reversing some roles. So for instance, our ELA interventionist, who's very strong, is taking on the humanities classes for Patty so she can do the interventions in ELA with her students, which makes a lot of sense. And so we have done some creative, Matt and the team and Tanya here have done some creative work to even just kind of reverse some roles to, to make sure that our interventions are going to get the traction we need. So we've done some creative kind of scheduling and rearranging with that. We also have put in additional planning time for our sixth grade teachers. So we've given them more time with the coach. And Tanya has laid out that schedule to provide additional opportunities for them to come together as teams and do some co-planning and to work with the instructional coach specifically around that. We also opened up after-school extra help sessions and have been very intentional about that. We opened up the tutoring opportunities after school to our other teachers. So we actually have Mr. Hickey, if you remember, Mr. Hickey was a fifth grade teacher. So the sixth grade kids know him. So he's actually coming up in the afternoons to help do some tutoring. And we also have partnered with Sylvan Learning Center to do some tutoring, targeted tutoring in both sixth and seventh grade. And so we're really excited about that opportunity. So we've tried to get as creative and innovative as we can to provide more tutoring opportunities after school. Jill PG is working with the teachers around, looking at possibly expanding Ascend Math to those that would really benefit from looking at that. And I know the coach is reaching out to Jill to have those conversations to look at what we could do differently. And then we are going to be working with the team to do some progress monitoring to see how the students are moving forward with their growth and achievement. So I just wanted to touch a little bit on some of the work that we're doing around grade six to help support the work there. And just some high-level next steps. Underneath my professional practice goal, the steering committee will continue to take the lead to finish off our blueprint, and I know the committee is very much involved in that, to work, continue to work around our accelerated learning. We're going to continue with the data cycles, with the classroom visits, those feedback sessions, looking at the RTI or response intervention data, and continuing, continuing with those cycles and also moving forward, of course, with the new math program and starting that work now. Our equity, district, diversity, equity, inclusion work, we are now, we finished our last session with Teachers 21, and we're now looking at how do we bridge this and take this DEI work into our instructional leadership teams and do some one-on-one coaching and support with them and with the principals. And then of course, the capital planning work will continue as we've discussed. So for the record, I did that in 20 minutes.
For the record, any questions? We're not done with our questions yet.
No, but I got through it in 20 minutes.
Yes, you do. It's much.
She's been resting her voice.
Nope, you guys picked on me today. I'm not asking any questions.
Nothing? Carrie, Erin? Erin, what are our next steps? Or Tim, what are our next steps for us as a committee? Because we usually give feedback on this, so.
Well, we can give feedback. We can, for us as a committee, we sit back and watch and wait and see what's going on and support Dr. DeFalco and the administration and what we're doing. And we, we look strategically at the blueprint that we're, we've helped at so that we can make sure that that gets pushed forward as well.
Erin, are you with us still? I know she had to leave for a bit.
She sent them.
Oh, did you?
Sure.
Jane, I don't think Erin is still on.
Okay, okay, I didn't think so. Thank you.
No, we can't see them.
I know. Today we can't, I don't know why.
Jessie, Erin might be in the waiting room, Jessie. Is Erin in? Okay. I was thinking maybe she got stuck back in there. Let's see, maybe she's there now. Erin, are you here?
Yeah, sorry, I'm back. Sorry about that.
Erin, are we doing any mid-year survey thing that we have to do as a committee to, to give response? Or that's just the end?
That would just be the end. And I'm sorry, I have not, if Jason just finished, I was not, I was out in a waiting room.
Nope, we knew that.
So I didn't hear what you were talking about. But usually it's just the end to go collect it unless it's Jason, you want the feedback from the mid-cycle.
Yeah, I, thanks Erin and Tim for, for that. Because I think what would be helpful for me would be able to get feedback from the committee on if, if the committee feels I'm on track, if there are pieces that I'm missing, what that might be. I always, I always, I do. And actually, at my end of year, I'll report on that. Like I will just give the specific feedback you all gave me and what I did to try to address that.
I'm pretty sure you did.
I thought we did that last year. For the last couple of years, I thought, that's why.
That was really helpful.
We have. I'll, I'll look back, but I know we have.
That's where we said maybe too many more tables, but let's see this instead. I think that was at mid-year, we did a comment session.
So that would be definitely be helpful.
Yeah. Okay. We will look for something and get that back. And then we usually report out, cut our next meeting. Anybody have comments they'd like to make now or additional? I for one am very much appreciative of the work. I think probably 20 minutes was doable because I really felt like we were in this work. And that, that felt good to be a part of the team that, well, I know what he's talking about now as opposed to what does this mean? What does that, what does that mean? I don't get it. So that, that was a nice feeling.
I just, I, I think that the, the data, especially for, I think, like second, third grade, those years where when we think about what the past two years have been like, the data's not horrible, which means we're, we're driving the instruction home, pinpointing the students who need the extra intervention. So, so the various programs that we have run through COVID really has remarkably built a good foundation for a lot of our. a good foundation for a lot of our K to three, which obviously, you know, sets us up for success for the rest, but...
And they were all in person.
And they were in person.
I mean, that was the work we did to try to get them in.
Yeah.
You're right, Tammy, about that.
I mean, the sixth grade is really interesting. I think you just want to dig a little deeper there, but, because when you think like they were already through the third, you know, into third grade, which is that key time, sixth grade is an interesting area, time.
It has been fascinating listening to colleagues of ours talk about, you know, we got to go dust the plan off, and we got to kind of figure out how we're going to restart this, or reset this, or, and, you know, I just have sat quietly, because we're not, I mean, you can see, our teachers, our teachers are killing it. They're doing a really great job. And Tammy, I think you said a really important word about that, like, those targeted interventions, but also, part of our RTI model, particularly at the elementary school, has enrichment for the students that don't need that. Like, they've got it, the kids have got the material, they're good, they're ready to be extended and enriched, and so we have enrichment groups at each of the grade levels, which is awesome.
Well, and I wonder how much those early summer pieces, or late summer, but early start pieces invigorated people as well. Like, I think all of the pieces are there, slow and steady, but moving ahead, not regrouping and going backwards, moving it forward, moving the work forward. Anyone else? All right, well, thank you for the effort and the work you do, and we are all the better for it.
Thank you, thank you. We've got a great team. And just the last item on my agenda, or under my part of the agenda, is just if there's any more discussion on the FY '23 budget. We just put that as a placeholder in case we wanted to loop back to anything from the public hearing, there may not be that much.
Yeah, well, since there was no public hearing, it makes it a little easier. No, no public in the public hearing.
Just because I didn't open it, right?
No, no, no public in the public hearing. No, I do, I would like to say how much I appreciated the work of the joint committee meeting. I was really pleased with the representation from both towns and the willingness to cooperate as a true district of one. So I know that there have been some tense conversations moving up to that, but I thought that that meeting went extremely well, and voices were heard, and voices were listened to, and progress is happening, so I'm looking forward to moving the budget to the town floors. Okay?
Okay, that concludes my report.
All right, Mr. Arronworth.
Certainly, thank you. And I will start by saying...
You've got less than 20 minutes, no, I'm kidding.
From a personal note, I was thrilled today when we received our certification for our E&amp;D, which we were anticipating, but it's a great indicator that we were able to navigate those difficult financial times and land in a stable place, and I will roll that into this fiscal year as well, and say that as we're coming down towards that home stretch, it appears that we are in a very fiscally sound place as well.
Just on that, Matt, you mentioned the 300 or so thousand. It's certified at the 500,000, so the additional would only be like next year when they certify?
Correct, so typically, if there's anything that was left off of that, it will end up rolling back into E&amp;D for the following year.
Okay.
With respect to our revenues, on the total revenue report, everything has continued to come in as expected. We did have a slight delay on our assessments, but we were in touch with our towns, and they were super responsive, and that's all settled. Again, there's only very sporadic payments, so we have to make sure that we're all on top of that, and it was, everything is coming in, no concerns about any of the grant funds coming in, and our Chapter 70 funds have been coming in, again, as expected. I mentioned before that our Medicaid program is showing that we're above where we anticipated collecting. As of now, we are $90,000 over where we had budgeted for, and I believe that we will bring in at least another $100,000 on, they introduced an additional COVID administrative reimbursement piece because of all of the health and services that needed to be done through that stretch of time, and we put in for administrative claiming, and we're hopeful that we're going to see another large chunk of money come back from Medicaid.
We are going for every penny we can get.
Every penny.
Yeah, every penny.
On that note, I also shared with Dr. DeFalco that I did receive notification, we still need to finalize some of the steps, but we're receiving another, I may have mentioned this already, the, another $79,000 from FEMA reimbursement for our COVID expenditures.
Seventy-nine?
Seventy-nine thousand. We were anticipating somewhere between 50 to 70, 75,000, and I was able to get additional funds claimed from some things that were denied in our last claim, because they change what it is that they consider is eligible. So some of the things, we had already received a 70, I think it was a $75,000 reimbursement from FEMA, but a lot of those things that I initially had claimed for, they said they weren't eligible, but then they since became eligible, and then we reapplied, and we put in another claim that has been approved.
Nice to stay on top of that.
So when that money comes in, what, where does that, like, where does that go?
It's a general, it is a general revenue. It can go into a revolving revenue, it's a reimbursement.
So the money is already, so it's a reimbursement, so it's not, there's no guideline on how to use it, because you already used it?
Correct.
Okay.
That's our van.
That's our van. I was just going to say, we know where we're using it.
Did you write van? We did, yeah, we went and bought it last week.
Oh, you did?
We did, yeah.
Did you get a purple one?
No, I don't believe it's purple.
It's champagne, or silver, or something, I don't remember, yeah.
I do recall, though, walking into Anchor Nissan with a 60-some-odd-thousand-dollar check, a bank check, not a personal one.
So we bought, didn't leave.
We approved, we bought it outright.
Yeah, that's what you guys wanted us to do, so we did not finance it, we went out and bought it outright. And so we have got the money back.
And now we've, now we're getting that money back.
So we don't have to even worry about taking it from where we were going to take it. I told you, we're writing things for our things that we're spending, and we already have money for, because we're trying to free every penny up.
That is so funny, that I literally just wrote that.
And now it's being 7D'd.
It is being prepared for, it's being prepared for registration, and we want to make sure that it's registered as a 7D vehicle, so there are certain things that need to be done to it.
So Jill can drive it, right, Jill?
Yeah. I know I'm going to be jumping behind the wheel at some point.
I'm sure, I'm sure I'll be behind the wheel at one point.
Hey, you're going to make me run over 20 minutes. So, no, it was an excellent experience, and everything is running smoothly with that.
That's awesome, thank you.
If you look at our total expenditure review, it's very similar to last month's review. Some red marks where they were last time, they haven't really changed much, but if you flip over to the backside of the general fund, you'll see where the totals stand as of March 2nd. Still, the only place where we are looking at any kind of red number is in the 5,000 series, which is the benefits, which we knew from all of these additional employees that we've had with us, that some opted for other benefits, and we'll be more than fine to cover that loss with all of the other areas that weren't anywhere near the red. Similarly, our grant fund expenditures are running as expected. We've been receiving the money, and we've been spending the money. And again, we may see the S or 2 encumbrances and expenditures, we may see some changes in that, as we made the decision the last time to shift some of those costs over to the general fund. I will also say, that change was not put into effect when this report was ran. And I spoke shortly thereafter to Monique, who, so on the next report, that change should be reflected in the numbers between the general education teachers and some of the S or grant spending, but it will still be in an excellent position. As always, we submit the personnel changes for your review. I'm sorry, are there questions on the revenues or the expense reports?
And just in case folks are wondering, the Unit A members that had resigned have had exit interviews, if anybody is curious about that. So I can speak to that at some point, if people are interested.
I will move on to the facilities. I'm sorry?
You did that quite well in your time.
Under 20.
Yeah.
So, from the capital needs update, Jason already mentioned, we have met with the capital outlay committees from both towns. We discussed the capital needs at our joint town meeting just the other night, and next steps, we're in the process of getting that moving with respect to, we have just now gotten the green light to submit the statement of interest, which Jason and I will be working with DRA. They will be pretty much detaching themselves, moving forward, so that we can really make it a district-run process, and, you know, then it won't muddy the waters with respect to the work that they've done, and, because we may be looking for a design company as we move forward.
We hope we'll be looking.
We hope we will be, right, right. That will depend on what they say regarding our statement of interest, but we are getting ready to prepare and submit that. And again, similarly, I will be reaching out to those individuals who were named by the town administrators, and we will be putting together that, I've been calling it a capital working committee, to go through the capital improvement plan and identify where the towns want to prioritize those other things that need to be done, whether or not we end up getting accepted into this MSBA program. The facilities update, you have a report in your package, and we can say, the baseball and softball, the dugout roofs are ready to be installed, and we are ready to be taking care of the fields. Everything as of now seems to be going on schedule, and that we, our intentions are to have both the baseball and softball teams playing on our fields for this upcoming season. Again, those are the intentions as we move closer to the season and determine the conditions of the field and how wet the ground is. We do have to still mount cement footings into the ground to hold the dugouts, so the ability to do that as we move forward will be something that we're watching closely to make sure that we can, we can stay on top of it. We have been in touch with the towns, though, already as a backup, and we've been told that in the event that we need to change the field usage that we have, we'll be able to do that.
When, just, this is not in your report necessarily, but when does, when do spring sports, like, when do the tennis people need to be on the tennis court? When do they start?
She said the 21st.
The 21st, I was going to say, the 21st, the 21st of March is usually the beginning. I can tell you that personally, I know that in my head, because my son is trying out for baseball.
There you go.
And the tryouts, not here, but those begin March 21st.
So we need lots of warm weather for the tennis courts to be ready, March 21st.
We do. So with respect to the tennis courts, we were informed that the, we were originally informed that everything would undoubtedly be done by the start of the season, which occasionally you're given misinformation. As of now, the cracks in the court have been filled. So the court is in a playable condition, but the company has now informed us that they're, they need to wait until the evening temperatures remain above 50 degrees before they could put the final coat on. They've been finding that they were having some problems if they tried to apply the paint and surfacing before then, so now they've kind of taken a step back, and they're saying, we want to make sure that they're standing behind their product and their work, so they need to wait until that 50-degree mark. So that may mean that the courts won't be finished until sometime into the season, but again, I've spoken with the athletic director, and there should be, based on his assessment of the courts, no reason that they won't be able to play.
So, but do we know, once they seal it, is there a, you can't play on it for three days, you can't play on it for a week, or we seal it, you play on it in an hour?
I believe it'll be, they'll be able to seal it, and then, I don't, I shouldn't, I won't say the timing of it, but the plan will be, if we do it during the season, it won't interrupt the play. It will either be done over the course of a weekend to let it cure, or we'll try to arrange it so that it fits into the practice and game schedule.
Thank you.
Yep. For track and field, the removable poles in netting are going to be installed, we got the footings in, so you'll see some nice new cages coming up, and that will, that will hopefully be a nice piece to our athletics program. With regard to the boilers, I know that everyone was aware that the heat went off, we discussed that at our last meeting. They have fixed that problem, they installed the new springs and the pressure gauge outside. One of the, there's some additional, there's some additional information where some of the, one of the compressors used to run the pneumatic valves suffered some damage, however, they're looking at it already, and we're prepared to fix it. There's another compressor, so there are no issues. We have redundancy on a lot of our heating systems and compressors or pumps, so that if one does go down, we have the opportunity to get it repaired, and things will not stop You can see that MES, Williamson Pump came over the last break, and they installed the new septic pump that was on back order, and now everything in that situation is returned to normal running conditions, and the, we're still waiting for Riverdale to come back and rebuild the circulator pump at the middle school that is under warranty, and we have reached out again to them, and I don't have a recent update, Scott was going to be speaking to them today and getting an update as to when. Again, the information that we have is with all of the difficulty acquiring materials at this point in time, it's the kit to rebuild the pump and the materials that they're just waiting on it. And lastly, as I'm sure many people are aware, there are still potholes at the front entrance to the middle school. We did actually have, Millville actually was extremely helpful, their DPW jumped and did try to put some temporary patch in the front, but then we since had some more freezing, and that stuff has cracked. We're working with both towns to see if we can get some temporary fixes, however, we're now starting to come into that season where the weather will hopefully be warm enough, and I'm hoping that within the next few weeks, we'll be putting down a more permanent seal. And when I say more permanent, it is a longer-term fix, however, it's not certainly permanent. That work that needs to be done on that driveway is part of the larger capital improvement plan, and that will be a forward discussion of this working group that we are putting together. Are there any questions regarding this work?
Matt, I have a question about the baseball and softball fields. If we are not able to use the ones at the high school, I had a middle school parent ask me, will we have a shuttle for middle school players to get to Roosevelt if that's where baseball and softball is practicing?
Absolutely, absolutely. We will make sure that, we have made sure that any student that wants to participate in a sport, or also, we've been doing the same for the drama program, middle school students that have been participating in that, we've made sure that they have shuttles to get to where they need to go.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Voice from afar.
Startled me a bit there, but it's an excellent question, so thank you.
Yes, they did.
Oh, did they?
It's even shorter here, Roosevelt from middle school. Just run there. That's your warm-up, that's your training.
All right, well, we may not provide a shuttle for those students that need the exercise.
The high school could run too, though, so it's not like, you know...
So the last piece of the facilities is the facilities request that you have in your package.
And, yeah, and the other, if you... And, yeah, and the other, if you recall the last meeting, there was conversation about sparkles and bobby pins or something, and when we were going to let the individuals know. We did let the dance company know that they were fine to, we gave them the thumbs up. So they, they were great, so. Just wanted to give you an update on that before you looked on this one.
So you do have the application for use and that will require action.
Anybody that?
Just a question, just because on the back page, it says there's no fee used. On the front page, it says $70, so just clarifying a discrepancy.
User fee will be charged, and they don't mark if they're Group 1, 2, or 3.
I mean, I would say that they're 3, right?
They are 3. I think it's a type, I think they just check no on accident because it's written on the front. Seems like she knows it's $70.
Yeah, the dance companies typically do pay the fee because they are, they are for profit.
They're not having a show?
I, I, it's competition, I think. So they're probably rehearsing and then they're going offsite for a competition.
So it, there is a charge and it's the $70.
Yeah, you can see it here, yeah.
Okay. Just, just a second. Would they like to make a motion to approve? Okay, everybody round a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Bobby pins and sparkles, it is.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Ehrenworth.
Facilities.
All right. Are there any school committee members that have any topics? Well, just a reminder, at our joint meeting, we accepted Amanda's resignation, sadly, sad to say. And so that means that in Millville, there will be two school committee positions available. No one submitted papers for the open seat in Millville, so if anyone is watching and has interest in serving on the school committee, it is an incredible experience working with a wonderful team. I would encourage you to maybe talk to your friends and try to be written in because whoever is written in, as long as they have a minimum number of votes, would then be selected to fill at least one of the seats, and we will be working with the Board of Selectmen in the town of Millville and the Millville representatives on the school committee to fill Amanda's seat at least for a year until the next election period. So if anybody has interest, please reach out. If you want to be elected to a four-year term, then please write your name in or have your friends do that. If you want to serve at least a one-year term and then decide, reach out to the Board of Selectmen or the Millville School Committee representative. Erin, Carrie, you guys have anything?
I'll set, thanks, Jane.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session. We do have a quick executive session, not to return to the meeting, to adjourn from executive session, but we need to do that in roll call. By the way, executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiation processes. So Amanda?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Okay, and so we will try to call you via phone because we.
I can call both of them.
Okay, so we'll do a little.
I'll call both of you.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so this meeting is adjourned to executive session, not to return, ever, no. Our next meeting.